2015 regular meeting to order for the Dixon County Commissioners. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next item we have is the approval of the agenda, and we do have some items that we will add to the agenda. Those include the review and consider the approval of the concrete bid for the Navarre Canstep program or project. Also to approve the updated disclosure report to the Department of Commerce for the Canstep project. And also consider approval of the bid to let the bridge at 745 Trail Road to Eber construction. And then we will have an executive session for attorney-client issues, and that will be at the end of our meeting. So I would move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item is the consent agenda. This includes the minutes of December 18th, 2014 work session and regular meeting. Also the payroll of $254,474.13, fund expenditures of $723,561.80, wire payments of $123,613.90, abatements of $8,287.30, and also added taxes of $565.12.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, and also would like to make a comment on the, it's always a shock in January on our fund expenditures of them being so much higher than normal, and that is because of so many of the contracts that we have with different vendors as far as software and every department that depends on that software, you know, comes due in January for the whole entire year. So I know the first few years, I was always shocked at the expenditures in January, but that's just how it happens.
Okay. So we do have the motion for approval of the consent agenda and the second. Do all give the second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Craig, if you'll go ahead and start us out on Commissioner Reports.
Really, been quite a while since we met. Like to thank the road department, like I said, there was no major snow, but they got out and had a couple of good reports of, you know, being, seeing people being out there. Enjoyed our department head meeting this morning, got some good information out of that. And that's all I have. Lynn.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm kind of the same way. Didn't really have any meetings to go to during the holidays, but did enjoy the time off, I guess, and being with family over the holidays, so. It is going to make a busy agenda for the day, but we will get caught up.
Okay. I'd kind of echo the same remarks. You know, you really do appreciate the road crews getting out, and even though it wasn't volume-wise a large snow, you know, they're very efficient at what they do and, you know, certainly make the roads safer for everybody, but also they keep the transportation part in place, which is important as far as the convenience and for commerce. The one thing I was going to mention is I did participate in a conference call with the KAC board, and a little bit the main focus of the discussion, as we all know, Governor Brownback is going to be giving his state address next week. And he has somewhat shown his hand, and some of the legislative senators and representatives, you know, also have made comments in newspapers and to groups and so on, but the long and short of it is there's a $280 million hole that they've got to climb out of as far as a shortfall for the budget. And, you know, you always think of, if you're digging yourself in a hole, you quit digging, but I, the concern is that trying to shore that up, that the highway funds being looked at, which would have a negative impact on cities and counties, and it's important to maintain your infrastructure. Also, you know, capers is being looked at, and so the Kansas counties are going to have really a defensive-type mode of, you know, we need to communicate that to our legislators that it really doesn't solve things if the cuts that they make is just more or less a shift of the burden to the local level. And so, anyway, it's certainly going to be challenging, and I think there'll be a lot of discussion that takes place on that. And that's pretty much all I have. Like the rest of you, the, most of the meetings or boards that I participate in, they did kind of take off the month of December, and so we'll be, certainly have some probably to report here in the next two or three weeks for our January meetings. I don't believe there's any petitions or proclamations. Doug, did you have anything? The executive session, that's going to work out for you at the end of the meeting.
That's fine.
Okay, great. We'll go ahead. Brad, if you'd give us your report, please.
Okay, I just note that during the work session, Sherry asked again, was a little update on the aerial imagery that we purchased this year from a company called Pictometry, and we've got the final version of those photographs in and that software, and I am very pleased and impressed with what we're getting from that. That's something that is a tremendous tool for us across the board in our structure that everyone uses, and as we use it more, I use it more every time I find something else that's a benefit. And even downstairs in our department head meeting, I was scribbling some notes on stuff that, you know, that we can have in there that can be accessible to us and use and we can modify that, so just very pleased with that. Just a little update on the houses. We have closed now, and we are the proud owners of the 203 and 205 East First Creek homes, so when it's convenient for you, be it today or whenever you want to, we can go and go walk through those, or you can certainly go on your own if you want, and give you the keys, so. We do have two vacancies in EMS that you'll see on the staffing report if you're not attached, and of course John is advertising, and they will be doing interviews as it allows on those. As you heard in the department head meeting, we have done interviews earlier this week for the custodial position that she authorized, and it looks like they'll be doing an offer to one of those applicants that looks positive, so hopefully this time next week I'll be able to report to the person who accepted the position, and we'll be having a date when they'll be on staff, so. During the holidays last, last month, the county employees donated over 200 items that they brought into the local food pantry, which we're very proud of, they did a good job, we took several ones over there, and to help those in need in the community. We received our 2015 K-Camp premium, and I'm very pleased to be able to tell you that it is down by fifteen, over $15,000 from what it was for 2014. That is due partially in response to the agreement, the three-year agreement that she signed with K-Camp, but also there's several thousand dollars there that was reduced because of our lower amount of incidents that we had, as well as, which I think is directly attributed to the training and stuff that we promote, so we're doing our best to try and educate the employees to use caution and avoid hazards, and I think that's paying off, so. I had sent you an email last week that I had a very positive meeting with the county attorney, with Darryl. I thought I would talk to you about if you think as far as ability to raise the staff, and we had a very good meeting, a very positive meeting, I was really, really pleased with it. The one thing that I did find out, and it just actually happened that day, is that, I'm sure they'll tell you about it when they come in for their department report, but the public defender's office out of Junction City, which assigns a person, an attorney to this county to represent those that are indigent people and need their services, the case look for them has been such that they have actually appointed a second attorney to Dickinson County, and that person was over last week and introduced himself to Darryl and his staff, so I think that's indicative of probably how you case, we've heard from Cindy McDonald, and we've heard from Darryl and Andrea, and that, you know, their case look continues to increase, and I think the fact that public defender's office has assigned a second attorney probably goes to credibility too, so. But anyhow, just food for thought. In your package, you've got the 2014 year-end staffing report. And I don't know that there's, you know, there's not much change from what you've got in last month, other than we have, the month of December, we had a few changes, of course. The jail has hired two correctional officers. Martin was able to hire his open position that he had, we talked about a couple months ago, and that gentleman, Trent Jordan, has already started, and so far Martin's very pleased with him. He comes to us with KDOT out of Junction City, he was a KDOT employee, lives here in Dickinson County, and he's hit the ground early and doing a very good job. And then, of course, we have the two open EMS positions, so. Went through a couple months in February, March, and April, June where we had no activity, but it seems to be the norm where we've got two or three changes each month, I suppose. Percentage-wise, we're 133, 33, 40, so that's probably normal, so. Also, in your packet is the 2014 cash balance report. This is pretty much going to be accurate, there's a few changes, as you know, for final billings and stuff, and Janelle has projected for what she suspects will come in, so this should be fairly accurate. We don't anticipate any surprises, but I am, I'm just very pleased to be able to say that, you know, we're able to carry over the balance of right at three and a half million instead of three and a half million, which has kind of been our target, you know, for the last several years. And as I said in the department head meeting, I, you know, very pleased with all the department managers and elected officials who are doing an excellent job of managing their budget. I think everybody is very frugal out there, and is looking for efficiencies and have just done a very good job. We had just a couple slight overages, and one of the examples would be in the appraisers' office, but that was due to a couple part-time people that we had to help us this summer, and rather than paying overtime, and we were able to absorb that administration and still be well, you know, almost 20% under our budget, which is one of the benefits of having us all kind of in that, so. There's nothing that was a surprise to it, everybody else was either out on the money or way ahead on budget, and I just, it was a really good year, so I have no concerns at all over that unless you have any questions. On the sales tax, I'm also really kind of happy to say that we met our projection in our budget. We had targeted 1.175 million for sales tax, and it actually came in at 1.196 million, so I know we were concerned back about four months ago that we were going to be under, that we had a couple slow months, but we actually made what we projected. I'd like to see it higher, but, you know, I don't want to be greedy either, so. Of course, the red subway paper, and then in some of the media, the vehicle sales been up the last 12 months nationwide, and I think that coupled with a little better economy and people's attitudes, and certainly a lower price of fuel is helping everywhere, I think is going to help our economy and hopefully here in the future. These are three months behind, as you all know, so the first quarter of 2015, hopefully it'll be a real positive, so. If you have any questions on that, I can certainly answer those, or try to.
And the sales tax additional will start on what passed for the roads in the county, the actual collection date, because it's, what, three months after?
That's right. They have to have a full quarter from the time that it's passed, and they're notified, so it will actually kick in April 1, and then we'll start seeing revenue on that 30 days or so, 45 days later, as it triples that, so. Okay, I also provided you with a listing of the 2015 reorganization items, which is the yellow tab in your packet, that's just for you to look at between now and next week. If there's something else that you think of that needs to be on there, send me a message or something, and I'll add to it so we make sure we cover it. I did send out last week a message to all the elected officials, to Cindy McDonald, and everybody that, if they have any reappointments that need to be done for any of their boards this year, I think on zoning planning, and those were covered, we're in between, because we're up to date on everybody on their three-year cycles. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the district court, Cindy's been out the last couple days, but the appointments are done for district court, I think you're in between, but if there's something that we need to add, we will, and between Mark and I, we'll try to get that accurate and get it, have a list so you can go through that next week with your reorganization.
While we're talking about it, do you have any problem with the 9 to 11 for our work session, and, you know, 11 after that? I think it's worked out well. I mean, was it too much time?
I'm comfortable with that, I think that's.
Yeah, I think it's worked well.
Okay. And, you know, if there'd ever be a need for us to come in earlier, or if when we have something afterwards, we can always make a special announcement, or if it would be extremely light, I guess you could always advise us to.
Well, we can always take a break in between work session and the, you know, the other one, too.
Very seldom do we not have.
Oh, I know what I'm saying. Yeah, I know what I'm saying. I mean, maybe once or twice this year, and last year we had.
Yeah, yeah, so. Which is nice, it's refreshing once in a while to have that, but, you know.
Right.
Absolutely, so.
Yeah, I don't think we can cut it down anymore when we have.
Okay. Well, I know we changed it last year for, you know, 9:30 and stuff, and I just, I thought it worked well, but.
I think we needed that extra half hour.
Okay.
On the back of your packet, and I didn't tab it, but there is a letter that I received earlier this week through the Kansas Department Emergency Management, which is basically saying that our application has been closed out because we failed to agree or meet their elevation standard. The same day, I got a call from Senator Roberts' aide, they, I think they apologized for not getting with us sooner on that issue, they'd been a little bit tied up over the last couple months, he said, but they were going to dig into it as well now, and I explained to him I'd gotten that letter, and he was going to contact me and do some checking, so, you know, I would be, I would be shocked at the very least if anything else happened on that project, but Moran's personnel, Senator Moran and Senator Roberts' office staff are still checking into it and working on it. I know from conversation with both of them, and the data that I had, documents that I had sent to them, they both were pretty much in agreement that there needed to be a little common sense applied, and that we not be held to a tsunami or hurricane standards, so. But at any rate, that's what we got, is an update, so.
Let me, while we're on that subject, though, if we don't get it, is it something that we need to budget for, to do no matter what happens? I mean, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, we're not going to be able to put it in this year, but we need to start considering to do it or not. I mean, it's not something we have to answer right now, but.
No, we can always put it on the table.
Right.
When we have those discussions here in four or five months.
I, you know, I mean, I know we were going to get the king of money to do it, but if we had, you know, if we were going to ask the federal government to do it, was all need, it's still a need, I'd see.
Need's still there, without doubt.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Both from the restaurants facilities and the shelter facilities, so.
I guess, maybe next time you talk to the fair board, we can discuss it with them.
Okay. And I'll kind of jump around a little bit, but on the, as it relates to the fair board, I think they mentioned when they were in here that they were looking at painting, doing a paint job on the inside. They have sent, they got actually four beds from local painters to paint the inside of the building, the big room, small room, kitchen, and the bathrooms, essentially the whole facility. And the little bed came in at $3,777, which was Howard painting over in Chapman, which I thought was a very good bid for that magnitude of the job.
And they, and Howard does a good job, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, he's a good local painter, so I told him to go ahead and move forward with it, and I've got copies of the four beds, and so they're going to move forward with it. Right now's a good time for them to do it, he can start immediately next week, and they've got downtime here in the next couple of weeks. Brad did also tell me when he came in that they are booked almost every weekend throughout 2014 for various, or 15 for various things, so so far activity's only really getting up for them, so that's a good thing, so. Let's see. On your purple tab, you have a copy of Section 318, which is our illness and disability pool in the county policy, and we would like to propose a couple amendments to that of 2015. Previously, this policy, this is the one that deals with employees who would like to donate to the sick leave pool, and that sick leave pool can be used by another employee if they have a catastrophic event that requires them to exhaust all their personal leave, sick leave and vacation leave, and if they still are sick and meet the criteria, then they can apply for a certain number of hours, up to 120 hours from a sick leave pool. We've had just a few employees over the years use that, not a lot. Fortunately, we haven't had a lot of them that have had great, you know, events that have forced them to apply for that. But the two changes that we would like to see made are, one, prior to this, or currently, this is eligible for both part-time and regular full-time employees. We really don't have per se part-time employees anymore for the most part. We've got some that work limited hours and stuff, but we, it's our opinion that part-time employees wouldn't be eligible for a program like this. And also, the way it was crafted originally, it's only available to the employee themselves, and if the employee has a spouse or a child that has a catastrophic illness or event that requires them to be away, our sick leave allows them to use sick leave for that family member, but for some reason, we didn't do it with this when we crafted it, so. Our request and recommendation would be to change that to where it reads the employee's spouse or employee's dependent child. Couldn't use it for a grandparent, couldn't use it for, you know, mom or dad, but someone a dependent child that is in their family or their household, so those would be the two changes that we would like to see updated, and I give that to you today for consideration that maybe we can put it on the agenda next week for action effective. And if you have any questions or anything like that, or suggestions, we'd certainly be open to that, so. And so far, that's, I think, the only change to the policy handbook that we would be making for the new year, so. I received a call earlier this week from Josh Scott, he's with Han Quarry, and as Dustin told you in the department head meeting, Hams is looking at purchasing some adjacent land to their current quarry down around by Woodbine. We have an agreement that dates back originally, I think, to 2000, that started with Martin Marietta, when they owned that particular quarry, and Hams bought it out from them, I believe, in 2004. And without going into all the details of the law, we, the agreement basically said that there would be a severance tax that they agreed to pay on every ton of rock that comes out of the quarry to go to the county to help offset some of the damages and costs for the roads, and I think it's.
A dime, is it not?
A dime a ton. And we get a check monthly from them, and they do pay it. I put the amounts just for your information historically, what it totaled each year. In 2012, it was $18,500, 2013, it was just under 20, or over 29,000, almost 29,500, and last year it was $22,000 that they sent us as a result of that severance tax. John's question to me was that, in the agreement we have, did I feel like we needed to do another agreement when they buy this other land, or would the same agreement carry over and continue? And my response to him was, I thought it would carry over, but I wanted to clear it with Doug, which I did, sent it to him, and he agreed if the land is in, you know, close enough to it, that there wouldn't be any need for an additional agreement to be in place, so. I very much appreciate John calling and clarifying that, and their willingness to continue to pay that fee. It's not a windfall by any means, but it's a little bit that helps out. At the same time, there was an agreement signed by them and the township, and they provide Liberty and Union Township a certain amount of rock every year to help gravel their township roads that go to and from the rock quarry, because they recognize the fact that they get a lot of traffic and damage.
That's what I was going to ask, if I'm, yeah.
That's above and beyond our contract and our agreement, they have one with them, and I do know from talking to both townships that essentially, they just give them a call and they give them whatever rock they want, so they've been very good to work with, you know. I know we complain a lot about the heavy rock traffic and stuff, and it is, it is a substantial issue on our roads, especially 1400 Avenue, where we get all that traffic. There is a certain, probably a higher degree of value than what we really know, having quarries in our county, we don't have to drive that 40-year rock either, so it's kind of a give and take, but this helps a little bit with some of the expenses, so. We have scheduled our 2015 Township Day, which is actually Township Night, but for the 23rd of March, which is the, I believe, the 4th, Monday evening, and we're working on the program for that, and we've talked, no one here, about some suggestions and ideas, and we'll be putting that together. I've also been working this week on the annual meeting for the North Central Kansas County Highways Officials Association, save that one breath, which last year, right after the one in Belleville. For some reason, I was thinking Minneapolis, that was here before. We scheduled, Sling County's the next county, and we went ahead and scheduled it for April 1st, because the election, I think, is the following week, and we thought that might be an issue with county staff, but it'll be held at the 4H Hall in Sling County, 4H Hall there in Salina. They have no walking scheduled right away, and he and I had communicated a couple times throughout the year, and he was all poised here after the 1st of the year to get ahold of the vendors and arrange the meal and stuff, and I'm kind of in limbo to see if that still happens, so if not, I'll probably take care of it myself, but that's, you might put that on your calendar, so that's, and I also got the bills, the invoices for the year sent out this week to all the counties for their dues, and hopefully that's taken care of for the time being. The one thing that, I hadn't talked to Dwayne Patrick, but I doubt that he'll have a problem with his president, as far as a program, you know, we always have the KDOT report, and I asked Sherry if she'd be willing to come over and do about a 30 to 45-minute presentation on GIS and the benefits to Rude and Ridge, and I think that would be tremendously beneficial to people. Almost all the counties have got some form of imagery, and they've got some form of GIS, whether it's proactive or not through their, you know, like we have, or something through their appraisers' office, and I think many of them overlook it, but that's kind of what we're talking about doing. And then afterwards, you know, after lunch last year, we kind of had some discussion, but I, John and I and Martin were talking, I suggested maybe we do a roundtable thing, kind of like we've done in our regional meeting, because I think there's a tremendous amount of value to that, you know, what people are doing, sharing some ideas and stuff, and talking about different things that go on each county, so. If you guys have any ideas on that, certainly be interested to hear what you've got to say, so.
While we're on, talking about roads, Brad, what did we ever hear about off Quail, or off of Quail and 18 from?
I'm glad you brought that up. We hadn't heard anything. We'd sent the message up to Dale Hurstburger of KDOT. John, first of all, I talked to the township, and John and Martin went out, I think, that same afternoon, and looked at it the next morning, they agreed that it is obviously an issue. They talked to the township, it really isn't a township issue as much as it's a KDOT issue because of the approach and the right-of-way. Anything we do is going to be affected by that right-of-way and that approach. So he sent the information to Dale Hurstburger a couple weeks ago when we first had it. We hadn't heard anything with the holidays and such. He sent him a reminder, I believe it was Tuesday, telling him, you know, with the weather, the way it is and stuff, this continues to be a pretty substantial issue, and we certainly would like to get a response back. And to my knowledge, we haven't heard it back yet, so I did get a response from Lacey Sell and from Randy Held right away.
Yeah.
Acknowledging, you know, thank you for looking at and keep us posted, of course we will, so. I don't have anything to be able to tell you, other than we're still trying to push the buttons to see what we're going to do.
Is there a chance that KDOT would correct that problem?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, I think there's a.
Since it is on there right away?
Yeah. Yeah, and the problem, I mean, we share the problem, the township shares it with KDOT, and, and we're in, we're in with the township, I mean, we'll help them, I do whatever can be done, and, you know, technically, it's, it's a township road, so it's their responsibility, but, but we're not, we're not in the mindset, we're pushing it off on them, we want to get, we want to be the people to facilitate, make sure it gets done, but anything that's done on the approach is going to affect that shoulder or that, that right of way. So, we can't do anything below without doing something at the top.
Right.
And they can't do anything at the top without working with the township, so.
It would have to be built up quite a ways back if you're going to get eliminated that steeping.
History of it, yeah, history, there was a 20-foot tube in there when I was on the township board, and the FEMA money we got back in 2004, I mean, when we had that high water event and stuff, well, they were just going to replace it with a 20-foot tube and leave it like it was, and I said, you know, I said, well, I didn't going to correct the problem, so we put a 40-foot tube in and talked to Hurstburger, but we never got into there right away. I mean, we brought it up to where, you know, and still slowed it down, it's still steep. But, and as I talked to Dale Hurstburger, you know, when I'm seeing him and stuff, and he says, as long as you don't, you know, change that, you know, I said, well, we're just going to the, mainly where it was before, then we're coming back with that. But we probably, gosh, I didn't tell me loads of fill we put in there, but I mean, probably braced it up well off the tube, probably five foot, because it was right at the ground level, so.
My understanding, and I wouldn't up there, but, you know, you've got the approach that comes off the highway and goes down some dirt, and if we raise this back up, then you're going to have this. So, this, the asphalt approach off of K10 is going to have to be raised somewhat to match whatever we do on the township road to straighten it out. And it's just a matter of working together, and, you know, if it takes us going up with the equipment and doing it, and having the township pay us something for it, so that they have a dog in the hunt, and they're, you know, where we have the equipment, personnel can get it done in quick time, that may be the arrangement we have to do along with KDOT to get it done, but.
We can fast-track it, I think would be the main thing, because it'd be nice to have it completed this school year.
And like I said, the biggest thing is Blitz didn't do quite what we wanted the township to do, where the, the branches on the, on the east side, you know, I would have made the road wider that way, because, you know, they didn't do that, I mean, which, you know, would have cost more money, but it could have been made wider to the east and stuff, but they didn't.
John's message to Dale this week was that, you know, I don't, I don't remember the verbiage, but that we would like to do something sooner rather than later, because we do have an issue there with school.
The winters, when that's the problem.
Right now.
Well, I mean, it is the only place my dad ever got a ticket for, for run the stop sign. My tractor.
That you know of.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see. Let's discuss public hearings for the Quail Road and the 3100 Avenue. Martin and John and I kind of looked at that. One of the suggestions that we had was probably February 19th. Of course, that's the week before Craig and I would be gone, but I don't know that that would matter. That would give us 30 days to get notice out to people and publish that. I think there's enough common interest in that area between the two bridges, we'd probably want to have them both on the same day. And I don't know what your thoughts are on that, but.
Oh, I think you have, just well, I mean, it's two different townships, but, you know, but.
At the same time, a lot of the property owners are the same people either way, a lot of people that would use.
Well, like, figure out why we're doing one and not the other, and how we're going to.
The last thing I would want to do is call somebody to be on two different days and have to take off work or, or do, you know, do.
Because Clark definitely owns the Wilson Bridges and stuff, or other property rights of the, the south of there.
Well, without objection, we'll go ahead and get that scheduled, I'll get a letter out to the property owners in the area, we'll get it published, and I plan on doing it on that day. You heard during the pub, or during the department head meeting about the issues we're having on the second floor with our heating system. You know, Craig had mentioned in the, in the department head meeting that we really need to look seriously about some, some remodeling or renovation. I think you're exactly right. We had a water leak the other day, and I'll just, this is, this is where the water leak came from, in one of the walls, but you'll see on this a little pinhole that developed, well, that pinhole, ADPSI puts out a lot of value, or volume, but you might take note of how thick the copper tubing is on that, and that's some of the original copper tubing that was put in the courthouse. The walls of that copper are not very thick, I mean, there are water minerals flowing through that, and it's worn it down to be really thin over the years, and that's certainly a concern, and I'm sure that all the piping in the courthouse is the same way, you know. But just a little pinhole developed out of the blue on there, and you can see the pinhole there on the, on the one side, but that was made for quite a mess, and we've had about four of those type things here in the last couple of years, so. I'm not sure what the answer is. It's going to be major, whatever it is, but what we've got going on right now is we've got some airlocks and some problems with the leg of the chillers, or pressure system that goes up through the, the big courtroom and on the, on the north side of the second floor. We have battled that and battled this, this air issue for years, never really been able, went with multiple service people, never really been able to come to put our finger on it. We did, we did find a water leak, we knew that we were putting water in and it was going somewhere, and they found a water leak underneath the floor of the garage, under the jail here a few months ago, and we really thought we had the problem. It was leaking in the ground underneath, and then, you know, we turned those off. The floor in the jail is the heated floor, that's where it was going, so. But we're still getting here, and I know Judge Sexton was extremely upset yesterday in court, it was cold in there. We offered to open the meeting room downstairs and they could move court down there if that would be, be better for them. Of course, for yesterday, it was too late, they were already going, but we're doing everything we can, and as Chancey told you, we have an expert coming in from, over by Manhattan today to look at the system and all of our service people, the local contractor. Hopefully, we can get something done, but I do think that we do need to look at that when we, when we get in our major project of doing something, so. Jump down to the 650 19, this should be 1900 Avenue, we're in instead of 190. That's your pink, if you go to your pink tab, there's a timetable on that that we would propose. Little history on this one, this is the one that we applied for, and we're awarded the KDOT funding on through our five-year fund program. It's scheduled, was originally scheduled to go next year, and if you remember here, a couple months ago, I told you KDOT called us after the election, and apparently, there were some comments made at, at their level, I think it was a day immediately after the election, we got the call and said, you know, you might want to look at using exchange money there, getting your money out of this so it doesn't disappear and get robbed, and get your bridge built this year, so. They moved it up, we sent a letter in to KDOT immediately, and requested that our money be put into the federal exchange program, so that we cash out that money and we take it, rather than letting it build at KDOT, or build at the state level, and then use it when we have enough in there, I think you remember me explaining that to you. So, as it stands right now, we don't know for sure what the bids will come in, we have the engineers' estimates, but we should receive in the ballpark of $503,000 of our federal funding that will go towards this project. They will withhold, I think, $50,000 initially, but we'll get the bulk of it in. We would anticipate we would see that money around May or June of this year. But what you've got here is the schedule that Cal Valley has proposed, that we can advertise this month for bids, do the bid opening on the 10th of February. The earliest start date on the project would be March 1, was 120 working days, so that would get that project going, and, and we would have, we may have a few small bills that'll come in before we get to KDOT funding, but nothing we couldn't certainly handle with our, with the funds that we've got on hand, so. Just an update on that, but what we have to do right now is I've got, and I've got the stuff on my desk to contact, and we've got three property owners that we need to negotiate a little bit of right of way, construction right of way, and a little bit of permanent right of way. It won't affect their crops or fields, it's all, it's all timber, but I'll be getting a hold of them this afternoon, working on that, so that we can get it done within this timeframe, so. And then, I, I don't know whether Brenda sent this letter to you, but the red tab is a letter that Brenda had sent, sent to you guys and copied to me, I don't know if you'd seen it yet or not, but it's a letter from Brenda Finn Bowers regarding an incident that happened on December 18th where her son was involved in a motor vehicle accident. And I won't read it to you, you know, you can read it, I can give a copy to the press, but where essentially she was, as a mother, receiving that phone call late at night, that her son's been involved in an accident, a very, very critical situation, that she's very impressed and pleased at how all county and emergency staff from the 911 dispatch all the way down to the deputy and EMS personnel handled the situation, and, and certainly appreciate her making those comments. And as a parent, I can understand probably how she feels and see the emotion in her letter, so. Down in the bottom stuff that we'll talk about for action, on your blue tab, you have the bids for concrete. This is the last vendor that we've been waiting on, bids for concrete on the Kansas Town Project in the bar. One of them had gotten a bid for Midwest Concrete Materials, which is Abbling Concrete, and then Penny's Concrete. And of the two bids, you've got the tabulation sheet there, Midwest was the lower bid at $1,848.60. So, what we would like to have today is just your formal approval for the record, to accept that bid on the project, to get that moving forward, and then that, that will give us everything we need to, and then the updated disclosure report will include that item to the Department of Commerce, which essentially, the only difference is we're updating the vendors that are on that, so. And with that, when it also allows us to get the banner of the sign made that goes in front of the building, you go through those from Ali's, because now we have all that information, so.
I've had some people comment to me just when they could really get started doing something.
Now.
You think now?
The answer is now, yeah. We've been waiting for all the bids to come in, and I talked to Mandy Fincham, now that we have all that information, she actually sent an email to Tom Arkin yesterday, and said, now that we've got all that information, all the vendors are in, they can take off and schedule the, the work, the state will come in and help do the asbestos stuff, and she had told him to go ahead and get with Ryan and schedule that, wanted it to work for them, but now's the time they can hit.
They can start scheduling things to take place.
Yes, there's been a few things they could have been doing, you know, kind of preparatory stuff, but now it's, it's time to get down and dirty, and if, if there's nothing going on out there from here forward, it's their fault and nobody else's, because it's, they can, they can get rolling now, so. I actually had a call from somebody down there, one of the key players as well, and I told her we're waiting on one more bid, and we actually had a sole source letter ready for you to sign today, because the other contractor hadn't submitted a bid until about 4 o'clock yesterday afternoon. But they did, so we've got a competitive bid, and either way, we're ready to rock and roll, so.
Well, like, some of them were anxious to see something get started, so they could be working before summer gets here.
Yeah, and that, it's good to see that attitude and that demeanor. That may change here six months, and if they've been working hard, they may say, well, wow, why did we, why were we in such a hurry to get going? Hopefully, it'll stay positive, so. And then the last thing I've got is down at 745 Trail Road, as you recall, is, we had gotten, we had solicited bids on that, on that bridge, repairing that bridge, that's the one we used in our sales tax presentations, the back walls washed out and, and keeps work, and the bids came in, and the little bid was Ebert Construction, $196,000. We would like to have, now we're into the new year, we'd like to have the authority to go ahead and vet that contract with him, so that he can start getting his bonding and his insurance and stuff in, in line, and take the 30 to 60 days to get the paperwork taken care of, and hopefully sometime shortly thereafter, the weather will be such that he can get started on that. At the same time, we're also working on a bid from him on that other one, just south of it on Quail, to try and do that competitively, since he'll already be in the area, so. But at any rate, that's, that's the other thing that we would like to have permission to do here when we get down to that portion of your agenda, so. And I'm drawing tired, okay. That's all I've got.
Okay, that was a few weeks worth.
Yeah, it kind of stacked up, and it has been a busy week, so.
I'll go ahead with our notices and communications, and things we've either received here at the county courthouse or, or by mail. This is just a notice of a hearing, and this is from the District Court of Dixon County, and once again, it's something we've, just kind of the formality, it's Western Energy, Myron and others, and it involves eminent domain, but anyway, it's proceeded just a little bit further now. We have a letter, and it just identifies it as religious information, and this is from, from Utah, and that's something they routinely send us. We have our budget report that we've received, have the newsletter from OCCK, and of course, they're, they have a place here, some of their operation right here in Dixon County, but also mentions that Dave Scanlon of Abbling has started to work there in a managerial position, and so that's a former alpinist person that is able to stay in the area, and also Jane Foltz is treasurer of the group, and she is a representative from Dixon County on the OCCK board. This is just a statement that we received from our Human Resource Department, and relating to employee compensation and benefits and a statement, and this is something individually that all of us received. This is from Sheila Brown, and it's just mentioning celebration of 20 years of service in Grant County, and they have a retirement reception, and so if, if any of you other commissioners, I'm not real familiar with him, of course, Grant County, that'd be out there at Ulysses, I believe, so he is having a retirement. Have a note here from Cindy McDonald, and it is just in regards to, this is the 8th Judicial District, which we're a part of, and it has the prorated percentages of split between the four counties for Dixon County, and it just mentions in 2015, Dixon County will be representative, 25% is what our share is going to be, and on the prorated amount, previously, last year, it was 26%, so I'm not sure if that's just, must have to do with case volume. But if, if we do have any questions, I know she'll be coming in probably here sometime in the next quarter. Okay, just about everything else is routine, the National Association of Counties has their newspaper, and let's see, I've got one other, two other letters here. Well, this is the one from Brenda Bowers, and you've already mentioned that, but one of the sentences too I wanted to highlight is that, and she's referring to the Dixon County Sheriff's Department, those that responded, but also when they called in to 9/11, but she says, please value the assets you have in these people. I know my family and I do, and, you know, we do have some very professional people within the county, and it's nice to get a letter of appreciation like that. And the other item, last item I have here, this is from KDHE, and it's in regards to a permit being issued, and this would be for... This, this has to do with a permit being reissued for the existing facility with maximum capacity of 600 head of cattle, 300 animal units, 700 pounds or less. This is for Michael T. Wilson, 419 1000 Avenue, Carlton, Can. This is for Michael T. Wilson, 419 1000 Avenue Carlton, Kansas. Most of these cattle permits are usually southwest Kansas, so we always have one or so, one or two from our county, though. Okay. Is there anything else that any of you would have received in the mail? Here's one I guess I didn't open. I said that was the last one, but thank you. This is actually addressed to Laverne Myers. Has chairman, yeah. And then, over our next week reorganization, so they're probably still, they'll probably put my name on there by the time Craig takes orders. Okay. This is, they've included an article, and it has to do with the death rate on rural roads is nearly tripled other routes. And this is an article that they have taken from USA Today, and this individual lives in Indianapolis, Indiana. But anyway, it's, I think they just want us to be aware. He is also Flint Hills Rural Electric Co-op Association manager, Robert Reese, Council Grove. And so anyway, this is something I think that we, I'm sure Martin gets information like this, but, you know, I think anytime we can address safety issues and look at ways to make our roads safer, it's certainly worthwhile and beneficial. I think that's all we have. I will mention, this was from before, but just a reminder now because it is so close, and it will be before our next meeting, Wednesday, January 14th. At 4:00 PM, there's a reception for the Honorable David R. Platt. Of course, he is a retiring district judge of the Eighth Judicial District. That's going to be taking place at the Geary County District Court, courtroom number one, so. And if possible, I want to plan to attend, but I'm sure some of the others in this room would be in attendance. If we need to get copies of that, we can make copies so the rest of you have that. Did anyone else receive anything as far as phone calls or emails or notification you'd want to mention at this time?
No, no.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move over to our action part of the agenda. And we did have some things that were added on, and one of the first things that we would address, and this is something Brad covered in his report, it's on the blue tab, and this is review and consider the approval of a concrete bid for the VAR Can Step project. And we did have two bids on that from Penny's Concrete, but also Midwest Concrete Materials. And the low bid was $1,848.60.
I move we accept the bid for Midwest Concrete Materials for $1,848.60.
Oh, second. Okay. We have the motion and the second to accept the bid for Midwest Concrete Materials for $1,848.60. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I guess just kind of a companion part of this that we need to do is that we would approve the updated disclosure report to the Department of Commerce, and this is just to advise them of this last approved item for that Can Step project at the bar. And I'd go ahead and make the motion that we do approve this disclosure report to the Department of Commerce.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. The next item we have is to consider the approval bid, and this is the bridge project 745 Trail Road to Ebert Construction in the amount of $196,051.60. Are there any questions or discussion on that?
Well, Brad, the other bridge, are we going to take that up separately then whenever it's...
Yeah, yeah, when we get down, we'll deal with this separately.
Yeah. I move that we approve the bid of, from Ebert Construction for the bridge project.
Second.
Okay. We have the motion and the second for approval of the 745 Trail Road Bridge Project being awarded to Ebert Construction, the amount of $196,051.60. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We actually did that in unison on the ayes, and after a whole year, in chairman, we finally got it right, so. Okay. Last item we have, I don't believe there's anything other than executive session. Last item we have is go ahead and enter into executive session for attorney-client privilege, and this will be for 15 minutes. It would include the commissioners, Brad Homond, and also our attorney, Doug Thompson. So I would make that motion that at noon, that's in three minutes, that we enter executive session for 15 minutes.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I didn't know if any of you wanted to take a break because we had rushed in here, but